All right, everyone. I really appreciate you taking the time to attend this meeting. And in regards to Eversource, I know it's certainly been in the press quite a bit over the last few months.
Enough you can tell you're froze there, Mr. Chair.
But I just want to extend, I think, can you hear me okay now?
Yeah, now you just broke free. Yeah, there you go.
Oh, Jesus, technology, I swear. But I but I will say, I just wanted to say thank you to the folks joining us in the call, those from Eversource, my colleagues on the council, as well as members of the public who might be on the call today as well. So if we can, I'll just start at in the left-hand corner. If we can just do any, just kind of some informal introductions of your name and what entity you're with. I'll start in my left-hand corner with Mike.
Sure, Mike Vitiavelli, I'm the manager of community relations in Massachusetts.
Great, Joe.
And I'm Joe Mitchell. I'm with Eversource Energy. I'm with Community Relations Economic Development. I'm a specialist and I work for Mike.
Thanks, Joe. Bill?
Good afternoon, Bill Stack from Eversource. I'm a manager in the Energy Efficiency Department.
Perfect. Priscilla?
You're muted. Yeah, unmute yourself.
How's that?
That's perfect.
My name is Priscilla Ress and I'm a media relations specialist, technology wizard, and I'm also a spokesperson for Eversource.
Perfect. Thank you, Priscilla. Councillor Davila?
Good afternoon, Chair. Good evening, everybody. I'm Councilor Davila for Spark Ward 6. Thank you for joining us. Look forward to a good meeting. Thank you.
Councillor Allen, I believe that is. Councillor Allen, if you're on mute, can you please unmute yourself?
Yeah, thank you. I just did. Hi, I'm Tim Allen from Ward 7, which is East Forest Park, Allen Cooley, 16 acres area, that outer belt area. So happy to be on. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you. And Councillor Ramos?
Good afternoon, everyone. Orlando Ramos. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for putting this meeting together, and I look forward to having a good discussion.
Appreciate everyone. I know Councillor Whitfield has plans to join us as well, but we can get started. I called this meeting just to circle back with Eversource. As I've mentioned several times, many residents in the community that I represent, as well as the some of the constituencies that my colleagues represent, have raised concerns around any rate increases that they might have seen in bills associated to delivery charges, in particular, is what I've heard. I know that there was also some concern, for example, that I've heard around solar panels and being given a certain credit during this time that seemingly was not applied to some degree. I've heard other concerns as well. And I, you know, certainly give the floor to my colleagues to share some of their experiences with those that they represent as well. But the purpose of the call is just to gain some insights, especially for the public, as well as any residents who I thought might have been joining this call today around any expected rate increases, why those might have taken place, what those can be attributed to, as well as, you know, kind of any mitigating factors that might help reduce some of the burden moving forward. So, you know, I would hope that this would be just a productive conversation around some of those ideas so that we can bring this information back to those that we serve. So, you know, what I'll do at this moment in time is first, I'll give the floor to just the councillors so they can share those concerns on the front end. So we just have some context to talk about. And then I'll turn the floor to the folks at Eversource to respond to those concerns. Okay, so I'll start. If there's a councillor, and again, one just kind of a thing that I didn't forgot. And so again, I'll start with the councillors. If there's any councillors on the call who'd like to share just experience with customers or any ideas around the rate increases, feel free to speak. So we got Councillor Ramos.
Thank you. Yeah, Mr. Chairman, thank you for putting this meeting together. A few weeks ago, I, it's actually over a month ago, received a complaint from a constituent who was concerned about her Eversource bill. She said that it was an elderly resident. She said that she saw an increase in her in her bill and didn't know where it came from. She claims that she didn't use, she, you know, she monitors her electricity use very closely and that she didn't use any more electricity from one month to the next. However, that there was a jump in her electricity bill, and she showed it to me. I took a look at it and I saw, you know, the difference in the delivery fee from one month to the next. And, you know, I told her that I would look into it and I would see if there's anything that I can do and to find out more, you know, more information for her. Fast forward a few days later, I got my own bill in the mail and I saw that there was an increase there as well. So I shared her concern. I did a little bit more digging, made some phone calls, and I found out that there was, and this was right around the time that the, you know, there was another story in the in the news regarding Eversource in Connecticut. And I found out that there were several people who had complained to the Attorney General's Office regarding their bill here in Massachusetts, to Attorney General's Office. And 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 that's when I, you know, started raising the concern. After I made it public that I was that I was considering contacting the Department of Utilities, I received over 100 complaints, over 100 complaints from people through social media, through phone calls, text messages, and email from people from every neighborhood in the city, and even, you know, just, you know, about this rate increase and or increase in their bill. So it was a widespread concern and it was a widespread problem. And, you know, I'm not I'm not an expert in this field. You know, we're not, we're, I don't believe anyone in the council is an expert in this field. And I don't know what, you know, what delivery services entail. I, you know, even if you explain it to me in a nameless term, I I'm just not an expert in this field. So I thought that the best course of action for me would be to contact the Department of Utilities and and just, you know, make them aware of these concerns. And I requested an investigation for the Department of Utilities. And that that request is still pending. But, you know, I just thought that it was important that because we are not experts, that we that we do have the export experts look at exactly what what is happening, you know, whether or not there was a rate increase. I don't know for certain, but I think it's worth investigating and it's worth looking into so that we can get people the answers that they're looking for. It's our responsibility as legislators to listen to our constituency. It's our responsibility to do whatever we can to to address their concerns. And and that's exactly what I did when I made that request. So, you know, I appreciate Eversource being present at this meeting. I appreciate, you know, those of you who I've been able to get in contact with and 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 those of you who have reached out to me from Eversource, you know, appreciate the conversations and appreciate you making an attempt to to, you know, to explain your position. And and, you know, we'll have a conversation here this evening and see what we can come to. But ultimately, you know, the the authority, I think, lies with the Department of Utility. And, you know, they'll they'll make a decision as to whether or not there was any unauthorized increase.
Thank you, Councillor Ramos. And I would have been, if I did not say, congratulations on a successful victory for the state rep. So appreciate your comments there. Councillor Allen, I will pass the baton to you.
All right, thanks. I'm now on the iPad, so I got put the phone away. Let's see. Do I just have, you know, my, I'm just going to talk about bills. And I don't have a lot to go on here, but my bill, my own bill, has been running around $60, certainly not, certainly reasonable. And this summer, it went up to 115, in the vicinity of 115, so almost double. Two, two air conditioners in windows running when they need to be running. And that was fine. You know, I don't know, it seemed like it didn't seem out of line. But I got a call from someone the other day who was in their 90s, lives alone, a woman who lives alone. She's in her 90s. And she said her bill had been 80. And then in July, it was 302. And in August, it was 352 or something. It was in the 350s. And that just seems, so she was hoping I would participate in this meeting. She had read about it in the in the in the paper that Councillor Williams had put this meeting together. So my my question is, really, how can somebody's, and she said she doesn't have electronics and all that stuff, lives alone, how could her bill go from $80 to 350? So that, while while mine seemed like a reasonable increase, you kind of explain it away with the air conditioners running for 10 or 15 days. So that's, I just want to talk about that. I don't, you know, if we can get to that sometime in this meeting, how what the recourse would be for her to find out what's what the real issue is there. That's, that would be a successful meeting for me.
Appreciate it, Councillor Allen. I see Councillor Davila in the queue. But before I turn it over to you, Mr. John Fostero, can you please just identify yourself and who you might be associated with?
Yes, my name is John Hoey, John, John F. Hoey, and I'm Community Relations for Eversource. I'm just listening in on the call. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, John. Appreciate it. All right.
Yeah.
Davila?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for everybody that is in this meeting. Actually, I was speaking, I'm looking at my own bill and Eversource. And, you know, it's interesting. I don't see anything out of the ordinary. However, I see the the concerns, and I'm sure that we're going to be hearing explanation of that shortly. But my concern, Mr. Chair, is sort of related to the bills themselves. As we know, we're going to this pandemic. And so I'm thinking that we got people out there who are concerned with the bills. There's more demand, that people are being used, people are home more, so they're using more more electricity. We still have the moratorium. And so I'm just kind of wondering, I would love to hear some thoughts from you guys as to how you guys are going to mitigate the the delinquencies or the bills that are behind after the moratorium's over, aside from the usual hardship that you guys provide, because we're living in extraordinary times. And I just want to see, I hope that the people of the city and the region will get a fair shake after the moratorium's over. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, councillor. We are joined also by councillor Whitfield. And before I pass over to the folks coming from Eversource, councillor Whitfield, I know you just joined, but I was giving councillors an opportunity to express some of their constituents' concerns around any rate increases that, you know, that might have been imposed or any concern related to Eversource. Did you have any comments? Councillor Whitfield? All right, maybe she stepped away. What I'll do is, we can circle back to any councillors that might join us after the fact, but I will turn the floor over to, I'm not sure who it is at Eversource I'd like to to address it to start. But okay, Joe, I'll certainly give the floor to you right now.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. One, thank you for inviting us to meet with your committee. We welcome the opportunity to to speak with you and share any information we have, which we do have regarding folks' electric bills. We recognize that during these trying times, you know, with with COVID, with the pandemic, that, you know, people are feeling a lot of pressure from a lot of different areas. Also, with with Springfield, with our close proximity to Connecticut, I'm sure a number of your constituents and our customers are are getting their news from Connecticut. And they probably heard stories about the different rate structures there. And I just, I want to communicate to yourself and any of your constituents who are listening, that the the rate structure in Connecticut and Massachusetts and the regulatory bodies in Connecticut and Massachusetts are very different. You know, there has not been, in, well, in Massachusetts, we're only allowed to present a rate case with the Department of Public Utilities no more often than every five years. And our last rate case was approved by the Department of Public Utilities back in 2017. And we're still operating underneath, under that delivery rate. So that hasn't changed since roughly the first of the year in 2018. Actually, and there's a number of components to people's bills and the energy component. So if you're actually, if you haven't selected a separate energy provider, the one that we have Eversource, and we don't make any money on it, but we go out to the lowest bidder, we change that every six months. And the actual energy cost component, effective July 1st, actually dropped by 23%. So granted, that's not, people aren't going to see a 23% decrease across the whole bill, but the energy component actually did drop. And we we also recognize that during, you know, the pandemic, that people are spending a lot more time in their homes, either working from home, educating their children from home, and just, and not being able to go out spending more time in their home. So their consumption's gone up due to this, but also due to the heat we've had in the last two months. And I know a number of your constituents may say they have not consumed any more power. But in August, I just pulled this up a little while ago, in August, 22 out of the 31 days were above average temperature. And in July, 24 out of 31 days were above average. And in July, every single day, except for one in Springfield, was in the 80s and 90s. And what's also interesting, too, is when you look at the weather charts, is even the overnight lows were also above average. So, you know, during the hottest part of the day, it's, say, 3:00 PM or what have you, and everyone has the air conditioning running, you know, people's consumption is going up. But for this summer, it's particularly warm. There weren't as many heat wave days where you have three days in a row that are in their 90s, but just the days were well above average and still were the night. You know, but what I also want to communicate is, you know, so there has not been a rate increase on our delivery. And but also that we are here, as Eversource, we're here to help. And we have a number of things that we can do to help folks who are having having difficulty, you know, paying their electric bill. And one of them is, and why the reason Bill Stack is here, we have a number of energy efficiency programs that are very flexible. And nationwide, our energy efficiency program is ranked number one. We've helped over 100,000 customers reduce their electric consumption. And it starts with a home energy assessment. And we've actually, even through COVID, we've, and if there's a deeper dive required, you know, Mr. Stack can go into it. But we've actually done, you know, remote energy audits, where folks with their iPhones, taking pictures of things and working with Bill Stack's team, we can do some, you know, remote assessment. And now, as we're emerging from COVID, we can do even more. And some of the things, and at the bottom, as everyone knows, when you look at your electric bill, it's fairly complex. There's a lot of things in there. There were 19 additional charges that the Department of Public Utilities, you know, makes us put in there. And some of them have to do with solar and net metering. But one of them is energy efficiency. So people are already paying for these programs. And after the audit, we can go in and do things like change light bulbs, low flow and aerating, plumbing fixtures, insulation. And for people who are struggling, you know, for income-eligible customers, 100% of the cost is covered by the program that people are paying into. Also, and to address Councillor Allen's, at least one component of it, is we do have, I think it's Councillor Allen that asked, during the pandemic, you know, we are extending payment plans out to 12 months on, for folks in Western Massachusetts, for, you know, unpaid electric bills. So that's something that folks can work with, with customer service. And the moratorium also, at the state level, there are no shut offs currently. So, you know, having to do with the pandemic. So we, you know, we're, we want to be good partners with the with our customers and with the citizens of Springfield. So we have these programs to help out. And additionally, this one was for Councillor Allen, I know, and also for Councillor Ramos, because he described to me a single individual. You know, there are errors, you know, sometimes there are meter malfunctions and things like that. So I encourage you to either reach out to myself or we have a customer service number for Western Massachusetts. If someone really feels that something is very much on a large scale, out of whack, we will work with our meter department. And every now and then, we do find an erroneous meter. But um, but by and large, the consumption has been very high due to COVID and the weather. And that's all I want to say for an opening statement. I don't know if any councillors want to have individual more specifics we want to get into, but I just want to just roll that out. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Joy. Appreciate those comments. Before I pass it to Councillor Davila, I know you had some remarks, too. Kelly, on our, do you mind just please introducing yourself for the record and what entity you're with?
Hi, sorry.
I'm sorry? Miss O'Connor?
Hard time hearing.
Kelly, are, can you just please introduce yourself? I am going to.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna try and log in from somewhere else. Hold on just one second.
Okay, we'll circle back. We'll circle back. Councillor Davila, I'll pass it on to you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Joe, thank you for that explanation. I just had some two quick follow-ups regarding your 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 presentation. First, again, I'm looking at my own bill. And you talked about the man being up, you talked about the average electricity, electric, electric usage being higher this this season, partly due to the pandemic. Now, in my own personal case, I see here that it says electric usage, usage summary. Apparently, I use 6.7% more than I did during the same period last year. So I'm just wondering if I can get a bigger picture as to what was the average, if you have that info available, the of the electric summary of usage for Springfield or for the average profile. Is that information available? Is that something that we can get?
And it's nothing I have at my fingertips. And I'm not sure if I can get that. It would take some digging, but I might be able to find that. I can circle back to you, councillor, and see if I can provide that.
I will appreciate that, because I find it interesting what does the average Springfield resident could use, has been using this summer, because you were talking about weather session programs. But I do believe that there might be something for the summer as well to help people lower their bill due to the air conditioning and the fans going all the time, so forth and so on. Another thing that I, again, looking at my own bill here, being charged $23.96 for distribution energy, energy charge. Now, I see that's based upon kilowatts, perhaps? By the way, you gotta be an expert to read this bill. This bill is so confusing that you gotta be an engineer to read it. I mean, that seems to me, say, wow, $3 for distribution charge. Was that increase of, where is that coming from? Why, why am I paying $3 bucks and for it?
Yeah. So one, apologies that the bill is complicated. Electricity unfortunately is complicated. I have a degree in electrical engineering, and I find it complicated. But the the three big components of your electric bill are generation. So somebody made the electricity, you know, probably out of natural gas, some coal burning, some nuclear, some solar. And in the early 90s, you know, one company did all three functions, but there was deregulation in the late 90s. So we don't do any generation. We have a few solar fields, but it's, it's, it's a different component. But there's a generation component, then there's transmission, which takes it from the generation asset and brings it to the communities. Those are the high tension wires. Those are the high voltage wires that bring it to our communities. And then distribution is, it goes from those high tension wires through substations. And with lower voltages, we bring it to the houses and businesses, you know, in Springfield and Western Mass. The distribution charge, no, there's a cost associated with, you know, maintaining the poles and restringing wires and replacing transformers and crews going out and repairing things. So, you know, you can understand, so for the generation component, someone's burning some fuel and maintaining that power plant. In the transmission, someone is maintaining those big towers and maintaining those wires. And then in the distribution, those are the the Eversource trucks you see in your neighborhoods that are repairing things, installing services and things like that. So, and your distribution charge is based on per kilowatt hour. So, you know, just like when you, if you drive, if normally your commute was to, you know, downtown Springfield, you'd burn a certain amount of gas driving there. But if you got a new job in Worcester or Boston, you know, as you travel more miles, you know, you're going to consume more gasoline. So the distribution charge, the more kilowatts that flow through the wire, you know, the more effort of work that distribution has to do to maintain those assets. So that's how the charge is established.
But Joe, you're right, the bill can get complicated. But I'm trying to to make this simple for the average resident, honestly, for me to understand better. Listen, I'm looking at that bill right now. And the first thing that I see is the total. Then you see all that stuff that you're talking about in the back that goes from 23 bucks to pennies. But the front, I have a supply charge of $45.37. I got delivery charge of 63.84. What's the difference? I mean, just had the three bigger big items. Is there any difference between supply and delivery and distribution?
Yeah. So the delivery and distribution is is Eversource's component to get that power to you. Your supply charge, either you're, it's through us, we're doing as a pass-through, or you might have an independent supplier, people allowed to select their own supply of power.
Okay. All right. Just have my question. I'm just trying to to make it easier to read and so that, just to make sense of what I'm reading here. Because I'm sure a lot of the residents had somewhat similar questions. But I defer to my colleagues, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Councillor Davila. Before I pass it on to, I see that City Councillor Brown has joined us as well. I just, and just in terms of housekeeping, I neglected to mention that we have a hard stop at at 5:40 because there is a school committee meeting this evening. And we just want to give the team enough time to set up for that one as well. So if I can, I'll pass it up right now to Councillor Mallow Brown.
Actually, Mr. Chair, before you do that, I just want to address, I sent something to to yourself and Councillor Ramos a couple of weeks ago. I'd be happy to send it out again, and maybe you can just give it to your committee. But there is a pamphlet we have that's called Breaking Down Your Bill that shows the different components. I mean, I'm doing probably a less than fair job of it, but we do have some some materials that I can I can send you again. And then Councillor Davila, then you can you can look at and share that with your constituents.
That'd be great. And I'd be happy to pass it on to our clerks.
Yeah, sorry, interrupt.
Yeah, no worries. No worries. Councillor Mallow Brown?
Sorry, here I am. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Thank you, Joe, for coming and speak, speaking. I'm not an expert on electricity, but I am pretty good when it comes to budgeting and how it works. Usually, I do know that you do a forecast that using historical data usually cover a span between around a three-year process. And then it's up to the actual company itself to manage that. So you foreseeing the increases and the decreases. Why is it always just all of a sudden an increase after a certain amount of time? Don't you guys forecast that stuff?
Yeah, Councillor, I'm not sure what you're asking, but it did remind me that, you know, one of the options we have in bill paying is people can pay month to month. And And, and sometimes, you know, during the summer month, they are higher, but you can select.
No, no, that's not what I, that's not, that's not what I'm asking. I'm asking, when you, when you're actually running a company, you know how much you're going to charge. You don't, it doesn't just pop up and you all of a sudden, you, 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 you plan for it, it's things. So you know if there's going to be an increase and it doesn't work at like month by month. It, it works almost a couple of years out. You guys don't forecast like that. You don't forecast an increase before it happened. You don't know that it might be an increase next year or the year before, because you should know that.
Right, and Counselor Brown, I think you might have missed the first part where we came out, we, we in Eversource, Massachusetts, we did not have a rate increase. We do it every five years is when we can approach the Department of Public Utilities. So it's, and what you might have missed, it's about consumption. We didn't have a rate increase.
So I, I still, to me, it's just always, it's always funny that when it comes to increase, increases as far as the bill, every, everyone in the other companies, they get, they get raises and promotions and things, and the consumer gets a bigger bill. I believe that there should be some way to, to change that.
Thank you. And if I can just provide a little context around, I think what Counselor Brown is getting at too. Like when we look at, for example, water and sewer bills, we've, we've gotten a recent presentation, for example, where they share kind of the, the yearly, there's a period, I guess, where they kind of show the yearly outlook as it relates to what they expect to be charging residents. And he represented like a graph to some degree to kind of, you know, change. Of course, there's variables that change, you know, of course, the, the bill structures and the, the pricing to consumers. But I think that is, I'm not sure if that's a model Eversource follows. Not, not, of course, not being water, but that is certainly what was presented to us. So Joe, I don't know if you had any final comments around that, but I think that's what he's.
Yeah, so, and for Counselor Brown, and thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair, is what we have is every five years, no, no more than, no more frequent than five years. You know, if we have a rate review where we would, we, Eversource, want to change our rate structure. One, it's a very heavily regulated industry. We go before the Department of Public Utilities. There are public hearings. We have them in 2017. And I want to say there were 10 public hearings throughout the state. And so, you know, that's, and then we present what the rate structure we're looking for. And the Department of Public Utilities, you know, responds with what they're going to allow. And it's based on what we want to do as far as grid modernization and increased reliability and, you know, what we want to do for the future. So there, I think, this might be what you're looking for, Counselor Brown, is that, you know, we do that. We, we did do that back in 2017 and there's an opportunity, but the public does come out and they do let, let us know how they feel about, you know, what our approach is.
Thank you, Joe. Counselor Brown, I'm not sure.
Thank you. Yes, thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Joe. I appreciate it.
Right, I, I actually had a question, Joe. I believe you're probably the appropriate person to answer it. But, so I am certainly a believer in climate change. And I know that it seems that as the years pass, the, the warmer temperature, the warmer climates or seasons, I should say, seem to be getting a little, of course, more humid and hotter. So just because the data does support that, is there any, I don't know if you've heard, but is there any, I guess, support that me, even the federal government might be giving entities such as yourself, like an Eversource, to help mitigate, knowing that, that, that data, of course, I think it matters who's in office at the time, if they do believe that information. But I, I do think that's an important question to ask, just as things, as the years pass, because they're not, the, the summers are not getting cooler, they're getting warmer. And that, to me, if I heard you correctly, I would perceive that to me, that bills will keep increasing.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, thank you. Yeah, on the, the 19, you know, Department of Public Utility authorized charges, they're in the back, you know, some are fractions of a cent, some are a little more. You know, a couple of them do relate to, you know, greenhouse gases and renewable energy. You know, with some of the distributed solar charges and net meter recovery surcharge. You know, those have to do with us trying to be, we, Eversource, being a greener company. And, you know, that, that is one of our goals. But also, it is in fact, you know, mandated by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts through the Department of Public Utilities. So we have to make our infrastructure more resilient and more green and, and reducing our carbon. So you are correct.
And with that, I just want to follow up on that, Mr. Chair, if I can.
Yes.
We, we said forth and we announced a few months back that a very aggressive goal of being carbon neutral by 2030 as, as a company. We're very proud of our sustainability and the focus that we have done towards, towards the renewable sector and, and things of that. But the carbon neutral of 2030 is far, far ahead of what the, what the state has mandated for what their goal is. And that's a goal that we, we have targeted and we, we feel very confident we are going to meet. So that is, that is a major focus of ours.
And Mike, just as a follow-up to that, do you have any idea how that might impact the consumer, either positively, I'm hoping, or the other way around?
Well, it's just making it a cleaner environment. So as, as, as you mentioned earlier, you know, these are all, this is, that's a factor. Global warming is a factor that, you know, is affecting everybody in all industries, not just us. And it's just something that we are doing as, as, as an industry or as a company. The industry is looking at it, but also it's, it's from the government as well. Goals from that.
Thank you, Mike. Appreciate that. Are there any other questions in the queue? I don't see anyone's hand raised, but I know Counselor Whitfield, you joined. I'm not sure if you had any comments.
Thank you, Counselor Chair. I was just wondering, did we talk about any of the programs? Because my phone is a little in and out. But did we talk about any of the programs that's available to the residents to help with the bills?
Yes, and Joe, if you can get a snippet, I'd appreciate that.
Sure, yeah, yes, Counselor Whitfield. So one, there is, we have up to a 12-month payment plan for, for residents to, you know, to pay off their electric bill, their unpaid portion. And then two, we have a number of energy efficiency programs that, you know, are paid for in the bills. So folks are contributing to this, this fund, if you will, that is used for energy audits and then replacing, you know, incandescent bulbs and adding insulation and just finding ways to consume less power, which will help them save money.
Okay, thank you. I need to do that program myself, so. Thank you for that information.
Right, I, I don't see anyone's hand raised, but I'll just also add a comment to you around just communication. And, you know, as a body that's representative of the people, it, I think I've heard comments a lot around, you know, just communication around, if things are expected to increase, things are expected to go a certain way. It would be, it'd be great to know that information on the front end without necessarily getting the surprise bill in the mail. That would allow folks to better prepare. So, you know, again, Joe, I, I know we've talked about this a little offline as well, but I think it's important. If you can use, you know, this body as well as I know other municipalities or what have you to, you know, to send some information out so that we can relay that information. I know using media as well, very helpful. Because I know that surprise bill is, again, it's a rocker to many folks. And I appreciate, like, again, the programs that allow for the 12-month repayment option and all that, as well as some of the state things that they're doing amidst COVID. But again, it's, it's something that still has to be paid at the end of the day. So I just wanted to offer that, that piece of information around communication and more proactive communication that we can get to our stu, our students. I'm not a teacher. Sometimes I think, yeah, but our constituents around that would be really, really helpful.
Understood. We have a, a number of social media and media channels where we do, you know, try to inform people that there are, there are programs and, you know, that there are heating days and things like that. But I mean, this is predominantly weather-related. Actually, we did kind of know, we had some, some media outreach as far as COVID and consumption earlier this spring. But I can certainly work with your, your committee, Mr. Chair, and also the, you know, the city council. And, you know, when I get those little pieces, I can share those with you and you can share with your constituents.
That'd be great. Thank you so much for that. Counselor Allen, I see your hand raised. Counselor, you're muted.
Thanks. Do you have, I mean, you guys are dealing with this stuff every day and for us, it's, you know, occasional or when things come up. Is there such a thing as an average increase in a bill in the summertime? I mean, I know it's all dependent on air conditioning and all that stuff. But, but what would be an average increase in the summer? If you took out, like, we have to come up with an average tax bill. And, and we know it's flawed because there's tax bills that are 4,500 and there's tax bills that are 2,000. The average is around 2,800 or whatever it is. Do you have something like that you could give us, what a, what a average increase is? I know the increase, you know, a family of six might use, you know, a lot more power than, than a family of one. But just looking at the increase, the percentage increase.
Yeah, no, and we do have, so we do have trends that go from month to month. And something I was trying to share with Counselor Brown is that one method that some customers use and they like it quite a bit is monthly averaging. So rather than, you know, you know, when the consumption goes up in July and August and then, you know, having to, you know, pay that bill and, and that, that hurts. Whereas consumption is lower typically in the spring and the fall, is you can select average billing. And so that's one of our options to help people, you know, pay their electric bills. So it'll automatically be done for you. The, the system will look at where your consumption was the, the previous year or years. And it comes up with a formula and, and you pay on a, on a monthly average rather than month to month.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's good information and I've certainly done that with my oil and I know people do with their electricity. But that's not the question I'm asking. The woman who has bill went in 350, she said, "I'm not worried about paying it." She said, "It already gets, it's already been paid." She is in a situation where somehow she set it up so it just gets paid and luckily she has the money to pay it. Her question is, why did it go so, grow so much? So it's the problem you just mentioned, the solution you just mentioned is a great solution. It's just not a solution for her because she was able to afford it. Just wants to know why it's, why it's that big.
Yeah, and it's just consumption.
My question about average increase, or I might, the follow-up to my question is, you know, what is the recourse for her when you say people, you said occasionally, somebody said occasionally a meter can be off or whatever. What's the steps we should go through for somebody who has incurred an increase like that, quadrupled bill? What do we, what do, what do I tell her?
Yeah, and so, Counselor, if it's all right, Mr. Chair. So one, I don't have a hip pocket number, like what is the average increase in July or August, because it's weather-dependent. But two, if you have your pen in hand, our customer service number is 877.
Got my pen in hand.
Awesome. Now, paper or write it on your forearm, 877-659-6326. And with that number, she can ask and say, hey, I think there might be something wrong with the meter if she believes that's the case. She can also use that number to, you know, schedule an energy audit. And Mr. Stack and his group can help take a look at her home and also set up a payment plan, you know, if it is going to be a stretch. So that number is kind of a universal number. The, we have quite a few folks who are, you know, standing by, you know, that work the phones and they, you know, when there's power outages, when you need new meters, need new service, or if you think there's something wrong with the meter or a payment plan or an energy audit, that's the go-to number for Western Massachusetts.
That one number?
That one number.
And is that also cover energy audit advice?
It sure does. Yes, it does.
Okay. You know, when we were dealing with the water bill, we had this big issue with the water bills going up this year and I was pretty involved in that. And, and for some people, we found out, like, if a lot of the reason your water bill went up is because you were watering your lawn, then you really, when you water your lawn, you don't need to, you're not utilizing the sewer service. So the water bill can be adjusted where they look at how much of your water usage is, is not sewer-related. And people, I, I know of a city councillor on the, currently on the city council who, who said, well, a lot of this is coming from my watering the lawn. So they, he had them come out and look at it and he's got a separate meter or something for watering the lawn where the sewer charge is not applied. Do you have anything like that, any nuance where there can be something that is about your usage that could cause, or is it all the same? Do you have anything?
No, no, so that's, that's great that you mentioned that, Counselor. Some of the things we're working on now that is part of, you know, that we present to the Department of Public Utilities as far as grid modernization and smart metering and things like that. We're not there yet, but it is in the development stage, you know, where people can set with their smart meter. You know, I'm looking for a X number of dollars per month kind of electric bill. And similar to some of the water meters, the smart water meters now, as opposed to at the end of the month, you get a very big bill and you're surprised that, you know, there's a broken pipe somewhere or a toilet is running somewhere in the house you weren't aware of it. With what we're working toward and with DPU approval, you know, to spend money on this research and do these installations is to have people have set points that you can set for your house. I'm looking for X dollars per month. That way, at the end of the day, when you were running the air conditioning quite a bit, you know, you get a little tickler, whether it be an email or something like that, a notification that, hey, based on your usage today, you're going to exceed what you set for a programmed budget number. So we're not there yet, but with our grid modernization, that's where we want to go. That's, that's where we're headed. So I hope that helps. It's not, that's not a today answer, but that's a down-the-road answer.
All right, well, that's good. It sounds like it allows the homeowner to have a little information that might adjust their usage somehow. Because if that's, if you're putting some of that power in the, in the homeowner's hands, I think that's a good thing. Okay, those are my questions, Mr. President.
All right, thank you, Counselor Allen. I will turn it over to Counselor Brown. I see your hand raised.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Maybe I'll, I'll clarify. I'm kind of with, my concern is kind of like with Counselor Allen and a little bit, a little bit with Counselor Whitfield, some of her concerns. What I mean by historical data, I worked as, I ran the market for the state of Connecticut and southern part of Massachusetts. And it was based on weather, lawn care. So historically, I know what is, what's gonna, what's, what's happened and what's gonna happen based if there's 200 people that I'm servicing. I know in the summertime that it's not going to be 50 degrees. So when I, when I'm doing my numbers, that's what I'm doing. It's never really going to change. Once in a while it might, but historically, it is what it is. That's why I'm kind of curious about some of that stuff, because weather shouldn't be a factor. Because I, I, that's how I, the job I worked with, weather was something you had to forecast considering. The heat, the cold, because it's a lawn care company. And then 70% of my constituents are elderly. And I can assure you, not only do they not know about the programs, I don't. Is there a way you can kind of maybe, I don't know, maybe give us some, if something we can pass out or pass out to some of the people? Because it, it, whatever way that these programs are being marketed, I can assure you, they've probably reached them like 2% of the people. I mean, that I know, because I've never heard of them. So if there's a way, maybe we can tweak how we're actually marketing. Because elderly people where I'm at, we, they don't, like, even, we don't, we don't do social media. Thank you. That's all. Thank you.
Counselor Brown, and yes, that's something we can share with the council. But, but also for any, any of our bill inserts, we, we share that information as well. So we, we are, we have different avenues as to try to get that information. We are, we have different avenues as to try to get that information out regarding the programs, whether it's social media. Whether it's regular media prints, advertisements. We've taken a very aggressive, even TV ad to to also mention these programs as well, but. We will share. We will share all these programs.
Do you have it on the bill itself?
It it comes. There's we have inserts that come in with the bill that talk about the programs. Yes.
Okay, because I I haven't seen. I've never I've never seen it.
Okay. We but we'll we'll get them through doing and we'll filter them through Chair Williams through this committee. Okay.
Yes, yes. Appreciate it, Mike, and thank you, Counselor Brown. I did, Ms. Kelly O'Connor, who was on the the call, she's actually a representative from Wayfinders, who's the largest developer of affordable housing in the region. And she wanted just to share, her her audio is having some issues, but she also wanted to share the fact that. Raft funding is available if you go through Wayfinders for assistance on utilities such as electricity with EverSource. And there's also other community programs that are geared towards more lower income and more vulnerable vulnerable populations that. Would aid them and, you know, meeting their bills. So I just wanted to offer that up for the record as well, since she was not able to. Do we have any other questions or comments on the call? All right. Well, seeing none, I just, again, really wanted to send a thank you and a just a matter of appreciation to the folks who. Source. I think this information was really informative. As some of our constituents will, I think, certainly be pleased to hear that there are programs that that are there to help them. I think a lot of the missing link there is just folks don't know. Folks don't know. And what they don't know, they can't use. So again, I think I appreciate you sharing that information, Joe. I will. We'll be in contact around, you know, any emails. For the pamphlets and things, just for informational pieces that might be helpful for our constituents. And we'll we'll take it from there. And again, I just my last point, as I as I kind of mentioned already, I just wanted to reiterate around communication. Which, you know, Counselor Brown has brought up and other counselors, you know, it's just important. Even if, you know, it it's not in the cards, you can't see how it's playing out yet because of the weather, for example. Just the fact that we might have the possibility of having a a warmer climate, for example. You know, I think folks deserve the heads up to see that, to see that information spread a little bit more broadly throughout the community. But beyond that, I I can certainly call this meeting to a close at this point. I don't think I don't think I have a quorum currently since another member of the committee is not present. But I will share that there are no motions to consider at this time. I just really appreciate the information that we can certainly relate to those folks again and that we represent. So again, thank you all for joining.